Yeah, it all happened this afternoon from what I, from what I heard.
And we need to make this.
It's very official.
Need to make a motion to do these things.
You want to stay later?
We sure do.
Yeah, each one, right?
Are you don't have to technically open it. When it's continuance, you just move.
Well, we do have.
Mention that they request that.
Right up the street from where I work, I'm at One Beacon.
Thank you.
Well, we do have important matters anyway for you to weigh in on yourself.
Rich?
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Norfolk Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, October 24th, 2018. Please be advised that the meeting is being audio and videotaped for home use. We have three items on our agenda here this evening, each of which is asked for a continuance, so I will entertain a motion, three motions actually, in order to continue. Well, at seven o'clock, I can take one, can't I?
You can.
Okay.
Motion to continue the hearing for 134 Main Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Until next meeting.
Until next, next meeting.
Which is November 19th.
At what, seven o'clock?
At seven o'clock.
The 19th, right, is fine for everyone?
Motion to continue the hearing for 134 Main Street, citing special permits to November 19th.
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00.
I knew that's what you said, yes, okay.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, we'll wait another eight minutes before we do the next one. In the meantime, we have proposed amendment to zoning bylaw for town, full town meeting. Rich, you want to tell us about that?
That's on for 7:30, you want me to tell you now?
Well, talk about it a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, the public hearing is scheduled for 7:00.
Can we do the design guidelines?
7:30.
We can do the design guidelines.
Is that all right?
That's fine, sure. There are two guys that want to go to the Red Sox game, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what, want to have a brief discussion with, we have the planning board and the design review board was invited for a discussion relative to the creation of design guidelines for the B1 district. This was one of the recommendations that came out of the housing production plan that was done by the town last fall. And the design guidelines, we applied to a grant through the Mass Housing and we engaged the services of MAPC to develop design guidelines. And there's two staff folks that I met with. And before we get, dived into the design guidelines, we have a couple of examples of. We have one tonight to go through, just to look at it, that was recently done for the Town of Rentham. And there's another design guideline that was done for the Town of Marlborough, just to get a flavor of the design guidelines, the content, the layout, you know, some of the graphics, the narrative, the text, to get us.
Who did these?
So, MAPC did both of these that we're going to take a look at. We want to make sure that what you see is hopefully what you want to get out of this in the end, so we're not going down a bad path and spend time spinning our wheels. So, I want to, if we can go through the, and then.
Are you good with this one?
Yeah, we can just, yes. Is it, can you see pretty good?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So, some of the, the things that we want to, that I'd like some feedback on is kind of a balance between the narrative pieces and the pic, and the pictures to have, you know, there's a variety of ways of looking at it. One would be to have a little bit more graphic pictures and examples, that way less text, so it kind of visually represents what we're trying to capture, as opposed to a lot of narrative. So, that's something I'm looking for your feedback on. Then, examples that we, if you have examples of good design that we want to, that you've seen around throughout the area, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the area, but as long as it reflects what we're trying to accomplish for the B1 zone, then we can incorporate it in. I know that, you know, we've got some good expertise between the planning board and design review in this area, so we want to capture that. And what we're, and part of this, what we do, we do have some, in the bylaw already, in the back of the zoning bylaw, there's graphics of some of the design elements that we'll be talking about. And we're going to take, we're going to have, I'll call it more of a robust photo, you know, you have live pictures as opposed to graphics that are a little, maybe a little bit dated, you know, not as crisp, so, you want to try?
Hey, Kevin.
So, the elements would be, we'll talk about landscaping, we'll talk about building placement, materials, orientation, landscape. So, elements would be, you know, benches, lighting, curbing, then utilities, you know, as far as loading areas, to make sure they're properly screened, how we go about doing that. And then, materials, like we have, we have, you know, we have, well, this building now actually has, doesn't have authentic materials on it, the building next door. And some towns, in their design guidelines, you know, they stress upon having real material, you know, woods and brick and so forth. But you have the other, there's other oper, you know, those situations where if it looks, if it presents a look that we want, if they're durable, and they, and they're high quality, they don't necessarily have to be, you know, wood or brick and so forth, as long as they accomplish what we're trying to do and provide more maintenance free. So, that's, I mean, I know we have, you know, we don't have wood on this building anymore. The, the mixed use next door has vinyl product on it, so I'm going to presume that that's going to be acceptable going forward, but I'd like to hear from everyone on that. You want to, you could chime in any time, it's not, if you see something that. Nothing bad jumping off the page yet, what you see here?
Well, you asked earlier, what do we think of a combination of photographs or sketches?
Yeah.
And I think it's a decent way to go, pictures worth 10,000 words, I mean, if you can get the right example that you're looking for in there, or a sketch, whatever, whenever. So, generally, the approach is fine with me.
Okay. Particularly now, I mean, the, you know, with the technology that we have today compared to years ago, I mean, you know, you really can do nice graphics and high quality.
How did we end up going with the MAPC, Rich? Is that, there was a grant to do so, or?
Yeah, there was a grant through Mass Housing. So, they provided technical assistance money for the grant, working through MAPC.
Rich, it strikes me that rather than give them a carte blanche, blank sheet of paper and say, "Start," that we, as a committee and the design review board, ought to at least give them some starting points. You know, it's great if you add your input, but we want to consider at least these 10 things, or whatever they are.
Exactly, yep. So, if you.
And I would, I would ask for starters, if we're, not necessarily tonight, but if our design review board members would come forward and say, "Look, based on what we've done in the past, and what this says, and other inputs, here's a list of fundamental things that we want to continue and see in the product that these fellows work on."
I don't know if you have any thoughts at the moment that you want to share, either one of you?
Grab a, grab a mic too, please. Not for us, but for home.
If this is on, but.
Little green light on?
It's on, yeah.
Okay.
So, my name's Dave LaPointe with the Design Review Board.
Right.
And I think, as Rich mentioned, I think the goal really of the design, or the design guidelines would be to obviously direct any prospective developer that's coming forward with a project in the, that district.
Yep.
And the materials and things that Rich mentioned in terms of the, what they're made out of, the colors of them, the landscape materials, screening of more kind of offensive areas, if you want to call it that, in terms of loading areas, utility, you know, transformers or whatnot, those types of things. And so, yes, the way that Rich described it in terms of a lot of graphics and photos is ultimately the way it should, should probably go.
Sure.
And not only, I would say, photos of, you know, good design or good examples, but also put in there some bad examples of things not to do, so that way they hopefully would be able to get an idea between looking at the good and the bad of what the ultimate goal would be.
Right. But, and I agree with all that, but beyond that, I was thinking, you know, we have a height restriction here in the, in the district. If we, if we really think that that's appropriate and we want to push it forward into the future, then that's one of the things that ought to be on that list, that says, you know, buildings ought not to be higher than, I think it's 46 feet if I remember correctly. If you, on the design review board, think it ought to be 50 feet, or, that's the type of thing I'm saying, that we ought to present them with some basic fundamentals that ought to be included in the finished product, rather than give them carte blanche to come in here and say, "You ought to have six-story buildings in the downtown."
I think except that Walter, this has nothing to do with zoning changes, correct?
No, not this.
That's right. That's what I would look at as well, is that when, the goal isn't to address specific zoning.
Exactly, but I'm nervous that they will do that, that's a, they'll come forward with stuff that won't fit with our, within our, what we want aesthetically or within our zoning bylaws.
Well, both of the reports that Richard sent reference town meet, or like, not town meetings, but meetings of town people. Do we know what their process is for putting together the report? Is there a schedule? Is, are there public meetings planned?
Yeah, so there will be public meetings, that'll be working on it. So, we have, so we really have two deliverables for the grant. One is the actual, so there is a zoning piece, which is looking at the B1 zoning. And then, the second deliverable is the design guidelines. So, we have a little bit of a, you know, opportunity to how we want to approach this. So, for example, we could have, you know, the design guidelines really be embedded through the design review board and the planning board, because they'll be most involved with that. But then, the zoning bylaws, I would, would like to maybe have a little bit of different representation on it than.
I think that's going to be two separate.
Yeah, two separate things.
Processes going forward.
Right. So, they're, we're not going to, we could have one, you know, we could go through one group as a working group, but I think the design guidelines would be more appropriate to go through the planning board.
I think the board is that the design review folks have done well in the important things like the screening of the utilities and the face gable, the fake gables on the HVC units, things like that. And the, the materials is kind of a tricky thing, because, you know, brick or stone and natural cedar shingles is nice, but, you know, with the rental prices Town of Norfolk gets, I don't think many people are going to be looking into that. I think what we've done in some of these condo projects is just from a, an aesthetic view, from a cost perspective and for durability, I think that the cement hottie board we've been using is very popular, and that comes in any colors you want, if you want to paint it, so I think the ASAC trim that we've been requiring is outstanding, because now we're doing away with the rot and the peeling and all that. And, you know, they're all stuff that's done currently now, and it's not done by people that just do high-end. And the thing about a commercial, I think the one on the rotary here, the same thing, I think they have a touch of brick on their bottom section, but at least it gives a long-lasting look and you don't have things that are, if the building's going to fall during 20 or 30 years, it's not going to be from rotted wood or, you know, misplaced shingles or things like that. I think one of the questions the town has to look at, like other towns, is do we want to have a vinyl product in the center of town?
We do, we have it in this building.
I know.
Neither of these, neither of these reports speak to the materials of the buildings.
Right. By the way, this isn't vinyl, it's polypropylene, but that's.
It's actually, it's actually a shake vinyl, which is a very high-end product, it's more expensive than hottie board, it actually has a very nice look to it, you know, as compared to just a regular clapboard type vinyl, which is pretty much.
So, circle back to your question, well, two, one, no, it's not, it's not in either one of those, the material, but I think materials is a very common topic that is worth considering into our design guidelines. We don't necessarily have to have it in there, but it's something that usually does come up, it's worthwhile.
Let me ask this question in a different way. Wouldn't it be beneficial to have the folks that are working on the plan come in and tell us what they're going to do?
Even more so, wouldn't it be, when they come in, wouldn't it be nice to say, and by the way, please, when you do your work, consider these 10 things.
Right, yeah, and when I, when I said, "Tell us what you're going to do," I didn't mean exactly, I meant like what the plan is.
It would make sense probably to have them come in and have like a working session.
This is what we are going to include, this is what we aren't going to include, this is, yeah.
Let me just step back a couple of steps for you. They are going to do that. The purpose of tonight is to show you a couple of products that they produced, to make sure we're, if we go down this pathway, this is a product that, that's, you know, we're in the ballpark, we're not in the ballpark. Yeah, they're going to be working with.
The Rentham document's underwhelming. The Marlborough document's, I think, a little bit more all-encompassing, in my personal opinion. I actually think, I've been looking around for other ones too. The Town of Wellesley's right in the middle of doing the same exact thing. It's kind of amazing how much documentation they have online, just in terms of research to produce the report, let alone the report itself. I'd be interested in seeing what that report is when it comes out. That's not MAPC, though, StanTech is doing that for them.
No, yeah.
So, I, I mean, that's obviously more of a private development, so I suppose it's not surprising that there's a higher level of detail and involvement in it, but.
So, if, there are, there are some other examples too, if you want, if you wanted to, I mean, I could reach out and get a few more examples, if you wanted to look at a couple more.
Yeah, I'll keep looking to see if I can find one too, that, that works, but, yeah, I mean, I think the Marlborough one is headed in the right direction, personally, it's just headed in the right direction. I think the Rentham one is a little bit.
Is that Marlborough?
No, this is Rent.
Yeah, this is the Marlborough.
Yeah.
This is Marlborough now?
Yeah.
First one we looked at was Rentham.
But very, very, but even, neither one really speaks to streetscape or building setting back from the street, or sort of, they speak to having a lively street atmosphere, but neither one even hints at how one might get to that point.
You can also have streetscape pictures and refer it to zoning section, just telling what's involved in this particular picture. So, I mean, with the streetscape, we have regulations that describe that, with setbacks and tree placement and green spaces, so maybe if we had little short scapes of sections of roadways, we could have zoning regulations in there that pertain to what they're doing.
Or sketches of how one might translate the zoning guidelines into a successful.
Right, so that they're, they work with one another, right?
No, that, that's, that's good comment to have that incorporated.
And then actually, another section would maybe be the suggested materials, whether we require them or just suggest.
Now, we're not really touching on this particular one, but oftentimes, there's a pretty robust section on signage onto itself. So, I know, maybe it might not be bad to have a little bit of signage in there, design guidelines.
Well, these fellows in Marlborough refer to a subsection. They don't publish it in this document, but.
No.
In there, they say there's a section about signage.
We don't have a budget to do a real deep dive into signage, but maybe just a little bit of signage might not be worth.
Bob knows better than I, but Bob, on our signage bylaws, weren't they established in the range of 30 years ago and have not been updated since? And the trick with the signage is, I mean, you want it to look whatever colonial, village-like, but you still want to make the signs effective enough so that the, the traffic is drawn toward the businesses. So, you've got this fine line, we don't want this, we don't want that, we don't want lighting here or there, but still, they get somebody to come in, they want to make sure when someone's going down Main Street at night, they know their business is there. And I think that we had talked about this five, six, seven years ago along that it's about time that, we have so many signed bylaws, regulations for different types of projects, residential, commercial, and I think it'd be a great idea if we probably put at least some of that into the B1, so what type of signage do we allow for these folks to, you know, market their, their business?
So, I want to get back to another question you had, Aaron, was, you know, the who?
Right.
So, is there an interest in, you know, I mean, between design review and the planning board, that's a pretty big group, it could be that group, or it could be just the design review board, kind of working with MAPC?
Oh, I.
Or it could be a shared, you know, you know.
I, I don't know about the second meeting, but the first meeting, it would seem to me, would be all-inclusive.
All-inclusive?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. And then maybe, maybe from that meeting, kind of decide how to go out from there. I mean, I know you wear two hats.
Yeah, I was going to say, we kind of have the benefit here of me being on both, so.
Yeah.
We decide we want to put it in the hands of the design review board, I can report back to the board or something.
I think it might be.
Not to speak for the design review board, but.
I think it might work well myself, if the design review board came up with ideas and scenarios for different sections and just bring some options forward.
Yeah, so maybe we start out as a combined group, but then work it through the design review board.
Right, and come back with some options for us and come with a decision on which ones to choose, which way to go.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're the ones that do this for a living, so it seems that's part of where Aaron is, you know, our contact doing both, so it's a nice connection there.
Okay.
Unless anybody else would like to be a part of it, then.
Yeah, I understand, I agree.
Reasonable approach to it?
Yeah, the only question I would have is, is there a danger in going the other way with this and being too detailed and too specific about what we're looking for, to the point where we might lose out on some people who might show interest?
Yeah, there is. That's why I was suggesting, I think a lot of our things should be suggestions more than requirements.
Yep. Well, yeah, definitely, they're guidelines, so they're, they're.
That's what I was just going to say, is that the intent is that they're guidelines, they're not a zoning requirement, that you have to do this, or you have to respect this in one way or another. It's a guide that we can always vary from it, you know, and like, like you mentioned, a lot of the projects that have come before us recently have been proposing a hardy plank type siding, which we're perfectly fine with that, you know, even though, you know, maybe in the past, wood has been more preferred, so.
Yeah, no, definitely, these are guidelines. We can, we'll make sure we stress.
These are requirements.
Pause the conversation and get back to dismissing them.
So, oh, yeah, sorry. Hear the conversation going towards specific material.
And there's folks who.
Guidelines in the specific streetscape, you want to.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Just want to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, we, now, we did get past those two hearings, that you can continue now?
Oh, yes. All right, we had a request from the people at Free David Road to continue until next meeting, so we need to entertain a motion to continue that.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Need a date.
Until November 19th at 7:10 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sounds like a unanimous vote. And similarly, with Cranberry Heights, definitive open space subdivision hearing, they have a request for continuance until next meeting as well, so I need to.
Motion to continue Cranberry Heights subdivision until November 19th at 7:20.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
So, if there, I don't know if there's any, I mean, I think you got a sense, the Marlborough one seems to be a little bit more, better starting point.
Yeah, I mean, just in going through my thoughts, so I would also say to Kevin's question that I, I think both of them are very, I'll use the word generic, they're very not detailed in terms of going too far, so I think the MAPC clearly has a grasp on that, those sensibilities, so.
Good, great.
Well, don't we have in our design, in our, in our regulations, the requirement for simulated divided light windows?
We pursued that, I'm not sure whether it's actually written that way.
I thought that was in there from years ago, which probably.
We had it listed as a criteria for, we wouldn't say denial, but recommendation.
We don't have it in town yet, so it's always been weighed, I hunched that that was, was stuck in the regulations someplace, requirements.
Design review guidelines would never require anything but, it was always in the category of working to meet the criteria of the field within.
Here, pretty good. Okay. If there's any, so I'll reach out to MAPC with these comments, and then I'll see if there's any other ones that I can, if they might have, that we can, I could share with everybody beforehand.
I think, we're there, we're doing the B1 district, there are a limited amount of land building owners in that district, I think as a minimum, we should have those folks in, just to let them know what we're thinking of and get some feedback or comments from the other ones that control the land, so I think they should really be a part of the whole process and make sure everybody's on the same page, you know?
I agree.
And what are you thinking, to try to get together for the first kickoff session?
I'm not sure yet, I think we were thinking probably.
2019.
Well, I don't know, yeah, I think we're hoping to get started in 2018. But, yeah, I think, I think probably we would try to get started before the end of the year, so, but after, after Thanksgiving before Christmas.
Right, okay, yep.
So, I'll, I'll report back to them on what we have so far, and then I'll, I'll look for a couple of examples, send them out, and then we'll, we'll go from there. And I think what we'll do is, when we have that first meeting, we can invite the business owners too.
Yep, good. We got a couple of minutes before 7:30, so let's talk about Fox Run. You want to give us an update on that?
If you want to stay, you can, but.
And anybody who's here for any of these items that we've continued, you're just welcome to stay, but you don't have to stay for, because they're not going to be on the agenda till next meeting.
The, so Fox Run, they've completed the paving work, there's some driveway aprons they still need to cut in, which hopefully, with the weather permitting, maybe can get done tomorrow or Friday, because the rain's going to be coming again, unfortunately, on the weekend.
Yep.
All in all, it looks like they've done a pretty good job with going out there, Bob's been taking a look and observing what's been going on. The, there are still like punchless items that they're going to need to attend to, and I think some of the stuff is probably going to get shifted to the spring, particularly some of the landscaping items, because we're getting up against the, the end of the year and, you know, getting, getting plants and trying to plant them now.
Are there issues with the septic system still?
No, the, the homeowners association threatened legal action, but they came to some settlement. I, I think they reimbursed the HOA for the cost of new pumps, but I was mentioning to Rich before the meeting, because I forwarded your recommendation one more time, shut the system down and scope it out, and they said, "Well, that wouldn't really matter now, because there's a, as part of the settlement, there was a disclaimer, we can't go back after Pulte for anything related to the sewage or wastewater treatment." So, they're, they're free and clear now of the pipes, and that would become a homeowners association issue.
I think Walter, Walter and I were on the board when this all came up years ago. I, I still hold the fact that I would not like to see this brought-to-town meeting for street approval for at least three years, to make sure everything settles in, and, you know, Jeff, who was on the board, I think is pretty strong on this too, that there's just too much that still wasn't checked, the, the setup of the other trenches and other areas aside from the drainage, we're still not sure of. So, I think the thing that'll. So I think the thing that'll settle all is to have traffic over there for a three-year period, and then have it reviewed, repicured.
Scope it again.
And if it's still in shape, I, I think then we're safe then, and we told the Pulte folks that a long time ago, and they agreed. So we would just hold the bond in place and let that three-year period expire.
Okay. I think that's, that's, uh, some protection from, for the homeowners association.
Yeah, absolutely, although that's mostly dependent on the, uh, the water, the runoff, uh, pipes that they just repaired, not on the sewage lines going to the, which, which I think you, you had said were, were much deeper or something, they're at a different elevation.
Yeah, they're not as deep.
They're not as deep?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought they were deeper, for some reason.
You've got some pretty deep drainage, they could be either way, but I'm just guessing that there did not, but there's still, there was no ever check of the water either.
Okay.
And the water pipes are down, so it just makes sense to make sure everything is still functioning right over time, because there were water things around there.
Okay. Rich, do, do you send anything to the homeowners association? I don't mind following up and sending them a quick letter and copying you or something.
Uh, what, what?
Uh, what we just discussed, the fact that, uh, I don't know if you want to comment on the bond being held for a few years or not, but.
No, I couldn't.
And the other stuff, so the other issue would be holdings, um, that hit list over till the spring at this point, because a lot of it had to do with planting and stuff.
Yeah, let me talk to, I'm, I'm gonna confer with Bob tomorrow, but my suspicion is that they would need to hold out with this.
No, I think, actually, in the regulations, you can't plant cap in November for us, so they gotta wait till the spring.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I can report out to the homeowners association.
Send them a letter, copy us.
Uh, I sent them an email?
Well, email, copy, yeah, sure, send them a, yeah.
Yes.
Bless you.
All right, uh, seven thirty has come. We talked about design, I proposed amendment to zoning bylaws for Fall Town Meeting.
We have to read, uh, read notice?
It's a big one. Read the whole thing?
Well.
I guess it's on the first page, I.
Yeah.
All right, here we go. Notice is hereby given in accordance with chapter forty A of the N G L and the Norfolk Planning Board. We'll hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, at seven thirty at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, to discuss the proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaws, which have been submitted to the warrant for the eleven twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen Fall Special Town Meeting. Complete copies of the text and amendments are available for review on the town of Norfolk website, W W W dot Norfolk dot mass dot U S, or in the planning board office during the hours of nine A M. to six P M. Monday through Thursday. A brief summary of the articles follow. One, to see if the town of Norfolk will vote to amend section F eleven site plan approval of the Norfolk zoning bylaws by removing any reference to building commission zoning enforcement officer and replace with planning board, or take any other action relative thereto. Two, to see if the town of Norfolk will vote to amend section F eleven B, procedure for approval of the Norfolk zoning bylaws, by making the following revisions to the first paragraph, with underline type indicating additions and strike through type indicating deletions, or take any action relative thereto. Betsy, do we need to pull this up on the screen to see the underlines and the strike throughs, or? Any person desiring approval of a site plan under this section shall submit. How am I supposed to read this? Should I read the strike throughs?
Yeah, just say, um, yeah, delete fifteen copies, I guess.
Shall submit said plan with application for approval.
So I'll read it. And so any person, sorry, I'm gonna restart that. Any person desiring approval of the site plan under this section shall, shall submit said plan with application for approval of appropriate fee in accordance with the site plan approval rules and regulations, as most recently amended, directly to the planning board. The board shall, within fifteen days after the receipt thereof, transmit one copy of such plan to the following. Building inspector, board of health, conservation commission, water commissioners, police chief, fire chief, highway superintendent. Three, to see if the town of Norfolk will vote to amend section D four, D two of the Norfolk zoning bylaws by making the following revisions, with underline type indicating additions and strike through type indicating deletions, or take any action relative thereto. D four, D two, the boundaries of the water supply protection district are delineated on the zoning map dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, which is depicted and is hereby made a part of this bylaw. These boundaries reflect the best hydraulic information available as the date of the maps. In the event of discrepancy between the map and the criteria that follow, the criteria shall govern.
Thank you.
Refer to screen for strike throughs.
I want to discuss the F eleven A.
Number one?
Yes.
Paragraph one?
Yeah. I think, uh. Might have to sit closer to the screen, can't see too well, I don't know.
Sure, sure.
Hopefully.
Comes with the territory.
The, um, proposed changes to the bylaw precipitated from discussion with F eleven A. Essentially, S, F eleven A is where the, right now, the way it's written, where the, the building commissioner makes a determination whether a project is not subject to site plan review, or could be subject to a limited site plan review. So that interpretation and discretion and evaluation is all held within the building commission. There's a, there's a more recent project that was before the town where the question of whether a project necessitated site plan review to the planning board, or whether it was exempted, um, was the right decision relative to the, uh, the determination. So there's a couple of things about the bylaw. One, and before we get into that, I guess I probably should just step back. I think one of the things I think would be worthwhile, I mentioned the last, it was back in August, actually, I think it was, we talked about this a little bit. I think the, the, the bylaw itself, I think there's a few different sections of the bylaw I think are worthwhile to take a look at and hopefully improve upon from what they are today, um, and have, and that's probably gonna segue to the recommend, well, maybe discussion whether we should do this change, and then come back with additional changes, or hold off on this, and then bring it all together comprehensively. That's really kind of what I talked about the last time with this, and it's here for discussion. But the change for, for right now, it just takes the building commissioner out and replaces it with the planning board. So the, the job of the building commissioner, they're making no determination, will now come before the planning board. So for example, somebody wants to put in a studio, or maybe it's a, an office studio. They need F eleven A, that normally gets filled out by the building, they fill it out, submit to the building commissioner. If we make this change now, and it goes through town meeting, gets approved, they'll come to the planning board. The planning board is gonna have to go, will be going through the, the criteria F through, A through F, and make the determination. Depending upon that determination, the applicant in that case may have to come back again to the planning board at a subsequent meeting for site plan approval, or it could be coming back as a full-blown site plan, so we don't know. But those determinations, um, if this goes through the way it is, would be before the planning board. And there was discussion last time whether that made sense or not to do that. Certainly, there's things within the bylaw, I think, are worthwhile to look at, to make changes to. And at the top of the list, the fact that we have one section that we call conditions and non-applicability, which is section F eleven A one, and then the next section behind it, F eleven two, talks about site plan exemption. Most people, as a, when you tell somebody they are exempt or not applicable, most people probably perceive that to mean the same thing, but yet there's differences between the two. To me, that's something that, that on its face, that we need to kind of make changes, so, um, I guess what I'm probably saying to you is that I think there are things that do need to be looked at, because some of the criteria in the bylaw, the way it's written, are pretty straightforward. You know, there's numerical numbers, two or fewer parking spaces, five or more parking spaces, really irrefutable, that they can easily determine. Then there's other pieces in here that become more subjective, whether it requires it or not. And I know that there's two cases, more recently, that Bob has shared with me, that I probably could make an argument either way, based upon what's being proposed.
Either way of what?
Being exempt.
Okay.
Or requiring site plan review, or limited site plan review. And then there are, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, congratulations.
And it's some, and the other complexity to it is, and, and not to go back to this one particular one, it was on Hill Street that kind of created more of the, the movement on this. It talks about special permits, but it doesn't talk about special permits for, um, other things and not necessarily with the building. So for example, it talks about the use, but there are other special permits that an applicant may need, that may, that probably most likely should trigger site plan review, but that's, again, subjective, the way it's written right now, you could say, no, they don't, the use is allowed by right, that's fine, but outside storage is special permit, so how you operating is triggering a special permit. So those kind of things within the bylaw are part of the challenges for Bob at the moment, to interpret it and to make determinations. And secondarily, um, you know, I think when people come before him, obviously, they want to try to get through this as quick as possible and, you know, minimize the amount of permitting. And that inherently sometimes could be problematic, because.
Well, that was one of the issues that came up in our last discussion, right? If we, if we take some of these steps that, that we've suggested here, it could slow down the process considerably.
It can, absolutely, that, that's, that, that's a, a real possibility. But at the same time, we can look at ways to try to minimize a disrupt, disruption, sorry, and delay in doing this. So I guess my larger point is, we could do this, do this change and not do anything. I still would recommend if we did go forward with this change, we should be going back at the bylaw. So then it's a matter of a question, do you want to go before town meeting with a change and then say, well, you know, this is a kind of stopgap, so to speak, but then we're gonna come back with some more changes, or pause, and kind of look at it, deliberate a little bit, and then bring something forward? You know, that's really kind of the question, I guess, for this particular one.
You, you presented it that way in two, two chunks, so to speak, and should, do we put them together into one large chunk and, and wait, or do we go with the first chunk now? And, um, it really, it is dependent on how urgent we think the issue of, of who approves this is. Uh, when we, we look at the example that triggered this, it's, you know, you wouldn't want that to be repeated, right?
Right.
You really want to make some change to improve that situation, so it doesn't happen again.
Yep.
Independent of, oh, yeah, we ought to improve the language, I think. So my view is that we ought to go forward, at least with the first item here, recommended that we change it in some way, and we've described a particular way we want to change it, which could be amended on the town floor if we think that's different, but.
You know, I, I talked with the building commissioner, uh, over the past couple of weeks.
Yep.
And you get into this, and this, this subsection is really ambiguous and messed up.
Yep.
In the same subsection, like Rich said, we have exemption and we have exception. On this Hill Street thing, Bob was going by exception, and the exemption, to me, was plain and clear. I mean, when somebody's got a subsection F and there's one and two, there's an interconnection, which, well, I was taught, when you're outlining something. So I think that this is very ambiguous, just as a matter of how do you read this and how do you interpret it? Aside from that, though, I, maybe you folks knew, I never realized that when you've got office space, a medical building, a regular office building, when one office switches and another office person comes in, all of that also triggers an F eleven. So even though you're working in the confines of the same office building or the same retail building, and doing nothing differently outside, or nothing differently inside, you're basically bringing in new desks and chairs, you've got to go through the whole process of F eleven. I never realized that, I guess Rich said it's not uncommon, but I don't see why we should have anybody needing to file when you're doing confines all within the same building. Now, that truly is the same type of operation, you've got a different space in a building with ten, fifteen of the same tenants. But now, if you have an office building, you get three tenant changes over the year, like in homes that are across the way, every single person before they execute a lease has to go through the F eleven process. So I was talking, I think Bob's in agreement, I think Rich probably is, that I think this needs study. I think in the meantime, where this, this, this appeal process is really tough, because if something comes up, until this thing comes up on the, uh, town floor next year, if something is up in the meantime, I think as a minimum, Bob should refer every F eleven request he has to Rich for two reasons. Number one, let Rich know what's going on, and number two, at least set a, a, a time period for the clock to start ticking, so if somebody does get aware of this, that they at least have a time, well, actually, Bob, didn't Bob say he was gonna have the town clerk stamp everything now?
So he, yeah, from this, he's, he's, once he issues one, he sends it to the town clerk to stamp it in.
At least that's covered now, but the way it stands, just I, I think how everything is set up, I think some of these sections contradict the other section, and I start to look, do we really need all of these folks that are components of one building, have to go through this whole process?
All right, but fair enough, and, and, and that's legit. But go back to the first paragraph, where we've written a proposed change to the bylaw that says it isn't gonna be the building commission, it's gonna be us.
Right.
What's your feeling on that?
I still think we should do it, but I think that we should, before we, rather than just, something might, something else might come up in this thing. This is kind of involved, and this has been around a long time, and I think there's consensus, the whole thing should be re, re-looked at, reevaluated.
Yeah.
And rather than bringing the folks in town, just one section to change, I think we should bring it all as one complete change.
You think it ought to be together?
Yeah, I just think it looks better for the people in the town.
And you think that between now and, and the next town meeting, um, A, we could do the work to clean it up, the language, and B, with the heightened antenna that Bob has and Rich's participation, the town would be protected, uh, so we could indefinitely postpone the whole thing, is what you're saying.
I think with the clock ticking for neighbors to have a legitimate chance to appeal, I think with every review going to Rich, to at least have the opportunity to bring it to us, or let him give a planning board perspective on what Bob's doing, I think we'd at least cover things like this, like Hill Street from coming up, uh, until we get this whole thing, uh, amended, and, you know, it's, Bob is right on board. He just thinks this is badly written, he thinks that a lot of these things he sees, he should never have to see.
Yeah.
And I don't think he really cares whether he reviews them in the end or, or we do.
No, but he probably cares very much that he doesn't want to have another repetition of six Hill Street again.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, one thing you could consider, John, is we could reword the first paragraph, um, and propose that as a friendly amendment on the floor if we didn't want to post IP the whole thing.
The movement on the floor is simply to swap out building commissioner for planning board.
Yeah, yeah, instead, we could swap out.
Which is a very small subset of the conversation.
Exactly.
Yeah, we've been to, we've been to town meeting with warrant articles for fifteen years now, with I have them. And we bring them up, and they throw them together many times the previous weekend, they're never vetted, they're never opened up, and then we end up getting problems down the road. You know that for a fact also.
Yeah, I do.
So I think that rather than just doing one little step, I just think it looks better, I think it makes more sense. I think it makes more sense to spend time and just review, bring the whole thing up at once, as long as we have a protection. So, if something like the Hill Street matter came up again, at least we're going to know about it.
How does the rest of you feel about that?
Any of others would know about it.
I, I thought that we petitioned for this the last time we spoke about it, but we were told that this was very urgent, and that we were exposed, and that we needed to act on this immediately. So, I think everybody kind of said, okay, well, if it's that urgent, then we should put something together. What I'm hearing now is that it's not that urgent.
No, it's urgent, but if we could, but I think that the thing is a lot more messed up than I thought, anyway. Because I was reading one little section, the whole thing is really indirect. When I'm showing Bob this, he's showing me this, and they're under the same sub-paragraph, but yet he's turning them totally different.
Okay.
So, so rather than, than make a change partly, now, my belief is the whole thing has to be changed and redone, and reevaluated, for who has to really actually file. I think if there's assurances to protect what happened in the meantime, then I think we're all set.
If I'm not mistaken, I don't understand the urgency, because the assurance to protect is Bob just defers to the board. If he's having any question whether or not it should be a site plan approval or not, he should just defer to the board. And so, he could, if he chose, he could do that for everything that's submitted to him.
Yeah, now, I think there's going to be a formal process where he gives Rich every F-11.
Right, but I'm saying that it's within the current guidelines. He, he has the ability to do that within the current guidelines. So, the urgency to protect the town, it, it, the vehicle exists for him to do what we're suggesting he do, which is defer to the board.
But you still have, you still have the problem with Hill Street.
Okay, because he didn't defer to the board.
Exactly.
So, okay, fine, but he can, he had, the vehicle exists for him to defer to the board, without changing anything. So, and I, without going back into it again, because I think I overspoke on this last week, I, I don't think this is the right move to make. I think it should stay with the commissioner, and the commissioner should defer to the board if he so chooses.
Well, the language, I, I understand where you're coming from, but the language doesn't allow him to do, doesn't prevent him, but doesn't allow, doesn't say, it's silent on that issue, isn't it?
Correct. I mean, any board can confer with any other board on anything they think is overlapping.
But the whole, the whole point of the, the article is whether or not there needs to be a site plan review, which is by the planning board. So, if the commissioner determines that there should be a site plan review, then that's his decision. So, if someone wants to appeal that decision, rather than come to the board, they have that right too.
But the issue that raised all of this was, was that he thought it didn't need it, and it really did.
And it was no appeal process.
And we've learned the lesson that he should defer to the board for questionable cases.
It wasn't questionable in his mind at the time.
Well, then, then I guess that's, that's, that's the risk we run, I guess.
Yes, exactly.
Do you think that everybody changing office suites should follow F-11?
No, I, I think it should be rewritten. I'm fully behind it being rewritten.
All right.
The part I object, the part I am not in agreement with is, I still think the responsibility should start with the building commissioner. I don't think it should start with the planning board.
The town, you've been in Rich, who hit L-11s?
It was, it went through the building commissioner, but ultimately, the decision was determined by the planning board.
So, it was a sign off by the planning board after the decision was made?
Yeah, it was referred to the planning board for their determination.
Right, right.
And you could, I mean, there's certainly opportu, we, we're talking about, is when the framework could change in it, there's a possibility that we could do a little bit of both, actually. You know, where it's, it's, you know, minimal criteria, where, you know, it's pretty cut and dry, there's no subjectiveness from the building commissioner, and then the other ones can come to the planning board. I think the Hill Street example wasn't necessarily, the applicant, they were probably, they were happy with the determination.
And just to clarify, the Hill Street incident was due to an exemption granted where one was not warranted. Is that correct?
Right. Well, that's the interpret, yeah.
Again, the bylaw being ambiguous, when you read it as paragraph two, they are not exempt, and he was reading it as paragraph one, saying he can make a exception. Because this site never had a site plan review.
Okay.
That started the whole thing, actually.
Could you have a companion image, like a decision tree or something? I'm sure the guy doesn't know the language verbatim, Bob, but can you, is there, is there like a decision tree that's part of this, you know?
He, on the, on the actual form itself, he has each one of those in there, A through F, so. But I was saying earlier.
Yeah, those are checkboxes, though.
Huh?
Those are, those are checkboxes, but.
Yeah.
The example John gave, where something is exempt, but then you have outside storage and therefore you need a site plan approval, does that show up on the form?
No, it doesn't. And that's, that's where the, I think that's where the language change needs to be, that.
Bob had also mentioned the fact, just because what happened here, when he gives an F-11, this man was going to then sublet out some of that space to a different entity with a different business. Bob was talking about putting something in that format that precluded anybody from subletting any of the space.
Did we get any feedback on the frequency of these applications?
If it's every time an office changes, if every time one retail shop goes to another, it's from your line.
I did ask him to see if you have, like, you know, how many per year, and he didn't have anything that he could tell me. Although, I can tell you, since that's what I'm talking to, there's been two that's been the office.
So, in a month, he got two?
Yeah.
Were, were you saying that there's something like three or four per month that go before the selectment?
Yeah, but that was, that was only in the different, that was for specific licensing, not for all.
Oh.
I would say that, in the meantime, you're right, we, we should put something together that's more inclusive, more full revision, more complete, instead of doing this piece by piece and having to go back and maybe overwrite something that we proposed in one sense, all over again, a season later. I think that, from the sounds of it, we'd be able to capture a lot of the exposure by having anything that he would grant an exemption for go to Rich for review. Because i- if it's going to site plan approval, it's going to come before us anyway, right?
Yeah, formalize the process that everyone thinks he should do, exactly.
Right, so then, just any time an exemption is given out, it has to get Rich's eyes first, and if Rich, you see something on there that's, eh, 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 and it can come before us before it's submitted back to the applicant.
Yeah, no, and the two that I looked at.
Cut and dry, or?
No.
No, not cut and dry.
I mean, I could, I could easily see this probably should go to you.
Was he signing off on them?
I don't think he's, he's issued an opinion on them yet, but, so I'll circle back with them and see, but, I mean. I think the one was clear to me, I think he's going to say it should be coming to the planning board on the one on Pond Street, the one on Rockwood Road, I don't know. But I certainly could see that, you know, you know, doing this, that it, it, it should come, just to be sure, you know?
I'd like to see you guys adjust this, so half the things that come through, like this inter-office, inter-retail changeover, don't even have to apply. I mean, it's one thing if somebody applies from an office to another office, and they change from an accounting use from a dental use, because in our zoning, dental requires more packing rather than office. So, you could see something like that coming for an F-11, but just a normal transfer of space like that, I don't see why we should have to make folks come and file F-11 with something for that.
Yeah, and I think as a total, maybe what I could do is get the total number of businesses we have in town, and maybe that might be a better way to relate to it, because, I mean, you know, we're not a large community, so the amount of these is not going to be, you can't imagine we have one or two a month, if, you know, that. But, however, each one of those is pretty important to give the right decision regardless of, right, so.
John, you had mentioned before that moving forward, Bob is going to go to Carol for a timestamp on these applications?
He was so frustrated, I use the word frustrated, that he said he doesn't have to, but he is going to have all of these timestamps. And he did say to me, I issue a building permit on a regular basis. People can appeal building permits, but there's no timestamp process per se, which is correct.
I think in the interim, I think it's a fair point, thinking Aaron or Kevin B., is to, when he's going to, if he's going to appear that it's leaning towards an exemption or non-applicability that refer to the, to the board.
Just a member of basic, basic control, internal control, just, just having you at least.
I agree.
See it, be aware of it, and have some type of a timestamp in place there.
Right.
So, you have the date of his letter.
And a minimum, if I get it from him, like, a circulated to the board, and you could certainly, you know, just individually send me your thoughts, because, I mean, that would help. Because, again, in this case, the one that we talked about, Hill Street, it wasn't the applicant that was agreed by this decision.
Right.
It was the butters, that's, and that's inherent in with the whole problem with this, is that you have a decision made within the bylaw that there is no notice. I mean, and I, I granted, there's probably a good amount of decisions that do happen, but, you know, the impact can be larger in these cases when, you know, whether you get to go before the board, get a public input into a process, so they're not all equal decisions.
Come to find out, that, that Hill Street project that was going to be put in operation has no stormwater. So, you've got a salt shack there, and you're going to have trucks loading salt during the night, during storms, and there is no stormwater, which is required. So, when I mentioned, again, this would be covered if you said, was there a prior site plan approval? So, there is one, we had a meeting with Rich and I, and his attorney and the applicant, and Chris Weider, and there's one manhole or catch basin in the front of the lot. Because I asked him, is there, is there drainage here in this lot? And the response from the engineer was, well, there's a catch basin in the front, but we're not sure if it really goes anywhere or does anything. And when I asked Bob, I says, this site doesn't have stormwater, and he said, yes, it does. And I says, well, after looking at the plan, there's one catch basin on the front part of the lot. Do you know where it goes? It may just be there, I don't know.
Like a dry well, yeah.
Again, it reinforces that if there was a site plan, this is all a matter of record. So, now, when the next guy comes in and changes over, if wa, if stormwater should be disseminated a proper way because of the area, which in this case, the area is pot residential, and it's got well areas there, then, yeah, it should be taken care of, it should be cleaned. And they're actually going to come up with a whole stormwater system for that site. So, that's a plus.
But what I'm hearing is more or less a consensus that says we ought to IP this article and, and go forward with the process of rewriting the whole thing. In the meantime, use Bob and Rich together as protection against something going awry. That's what I'm hearing, is, I could be wrong, but anybody disagree with that? And that, that we need to, to probably let, let Joyce Terrio.
Asked us in the hall, she is the liaison for our board.
From the finance board?
From, from the.
Advisory committee.
Advisory committee, yeah, that's the term.
She was going to call them, check in before they do much work, and let them know.
Yeah.
Incidentally, are you still on the warrant for a, an amount of money to redo the bylaws? Weren't you asking for money for to redo the bylaws?
I, I was, I had heard that they didn't support that.
Oh, they didn't?
No.
They should have to work with these sometime.
This board?
No, the.
The advisory committee, right?
Advisory.
Okay, you keep looking at me like I'm the one that did it.
No, no!
I'll, I'll look at Aaron.
So, they turned you down, huh?
I'll look at this guy.
You know, we don't have a lot of activity in this town, because it's not a big commercial center, but.
Yeah.
As you come up with some of these cases, if we have, you weren't here for a year or so, but if we come up with some of these cases over the past number of years, these are so convoluted, they're indirect. I mean, we had one years ago that a resident brought forward that we were limiting political signs. And we were, hey, okay, I knew you looked familiar. And we were limiting them to the time and the amount and that. And after it come out to find that it's law that you can have as many signs as you want, you can keep them up all year if you want, and nobody can say anything. But we were going by this bylaw that said you couldn't do that. And the sign police would go out and take your political support.
Which is what triggered the whole thing. The assistant building commissioner arrived in my driveway and said, those signs are outside the. $300 a day fine, ooh, take them down. And then I went, started the process of working on change, but $300 a day is a pretty expensive fine, so it wasn't good.
The funny thing is, these things are infiltrated all throughout the bylaws, all.
Yeah, the way it was written, I think it was this, like, two-week window that you could put them up.
Yeah.
Put them up before that, it was the subject of that fine.
Right, it was like.
I didn't realize, I just stuck them up.
And it wasn't a right away thing, it was just having them up anywhere on your property.
Anywhere, anywhere in the town, anywhere in the town.
Interesting.
Any need to revisit exemptions over some previous time period, or, like, go back? So, before the Hill Street thing, is there, do you need to look at the last six months to see if there's any impact that was missed? I'm not trying to create work, I just don't know.
Yeah, well, actually, there is, I know Bob is working on, he has some dated ones that, that need to come through, and they haven't, he's been working on them already. I do know he mentioned a couple already, you know, as he was, he became aware of some situations where somebody moved out, somebody moved in, and they need to go through the process, so. So, he is doing that right now.
All right, anymore on this subject, Rich, that you want to?
Not, not for myself, he's worked on it.
Well, there's, that was one, there's two others that are proposed, right?
For that article?
That was part one of three.
Yeah, the second one, what's the second, I know the second. Is it a separate article?
It is, yes.
Just number copies for the second article.
Oh, it is, okay. Oh, good, we did separate that.
Yeah, we said, I separated it.
And I highly recommend we endorse this second one, because we're in the process, so in the process of converting over to all online permitting, which in turn, you know, obviously, is going to reduce the amount of copies that we need, and truth be told, we actually tell people not to bring as many copies, because we are more like electronic, anyway. But we even go further going forward, once we get the online permitting finished. I know the board of health is pretty much done.
Rich, it doesn't say here, however, that the format that you're looking for is digital. It just says you have to submit a plan, right? Just submit said plan, okay, how?
In accordance with the site plan rules or regulations, so we're going to have to amend the site plan rules and regulations as well. This is the first piece.
Yeah, I see it.
And the, the second piece is, we're going to, you'll have another hearing to amend the site plan regulations.
Subsequent to this, this getting approved at Tommy, okay, fair enough, yeah.
Do we have the ability to scan a physical copy and make it electronic?
Yeah.
So, I mean, they can do whatever they want, whatever is used for them in the case, right?
Yeah. But going forward, once we have the, this online permitting, it'll all be integrated, so.
So, you're happy with the language that it gives us?
I hope so, I drafted it.
Yeah, I understand, but, but, but the issue of digital format.
Yeah, no, we're fine, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We haven't had any issues with that.
So, what I'm hearing, or, or not hearing, is that the board would endorse the language that is proposed here in this second article.
Agreed.
Agreed?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think we need to take a vote, we just have to say that. Go ahead, number three. Boundaries, you want to show that map?
Yeah, so we can go to the other round. Yeah, so we can go to the other round. All right, so we, what the zoning proposal amendment is, if you look, so this is in red, and it might be a little hard to see, but right now, within the Water Supply Protection District, it refers to the zone twos for maps through Mass GIS Oliver Maps here. You see that? It's on me, maybe I'll see. But what we're doing is two things. One is we're overlaying the zone twos on top of our zoning map. So what you see on this here is now, this represents the dash or diagonal line, represents the zone twos for our wells within town Norfolk. The, so that's part of what's going on, so it'll be all integrated in one place, so you'll see it. There'll be paper copies available online. And then the second piece of this, if you wanted to go to the next slide, please. That's it. Yeah, this would be, let me go to the one after that, what happened. So this, this area here is the, is the Holbrook Street well boundary that is going, is in the approval process, going through the DEP. So we need to adopt that zone two. So what this would do, that would be in place, the zone two for the Holbrook Street well. These red areas here.
Yeah.
Those areas there represent the true new zone two that would be associated with the Holbrook Street rail, well, excuse me. The rest of the zone two for Holbrook Street coincides with Coal Street, so there's really no change at all. So that really represents this new net area to the zone two.
Yeah.
Now, even if this wasn't in place through our zoning bylaw, once that well, theoretically, it's not possible because we have to do this in conjunction with the DEP, but the zone two would still be in place, so anything related to wastewater would be subject to the DEP's zone two standards. The effect of that, what that means is, it now, you know, it's one bedroom for 10,000 square feet of area.
Right.
So that's, that's the net effect of being within the zone two. How that could impact you? So for example, if you're in that area and you have a three-bedroom house, and you don't actually have enough land area to add a fourth bedroom and upgrading your septic system, that could be an issue. But if you have a three-bedroom house in there, and you wanna maintain the three-bedroom house, you need to upgrade your septic system down the road, there's no issue. So everything remains the same.
All right, so two questions. If you've got a two, in this new area, if you've got a two-bedroom house.
Yeah.
You say you've got a three-bedroom house.
Mm-hmm.
And you've only got less than 30,000 feet of land, are you stuck?
Yeah, then you're stuck if you wanna.
So what, what do you do? You've got a, you've got a septic that doesn't comply because you're now in an aquifer zone.
So what?
Do any of those exist?
Your grandfather for three bedrooms.
You are grandfathered, so if you're in there with less than 30,000 feet, you've got three bedrooms, you're okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
But if you ever wanna sell that house and the other person wants to put on a four-bedroom, they cannot do that, correct?
Correct, right, yep, yep. And then, obviously, any new construction that would be subject to.
Are there many houses in that area, the new zone, that will have this effect?
You know, we don't show the building layers, I'm not sure. I could take a little closer look and see. But some, the unfortunate thing is, we, in some respects, we really had no choice because, I mean.
Right, I know.
The well was, the well was needed, so.
Do the people know? Or are you going to contact all the people that live in that area and just describe what was just said to them?
Uh, no.
Yeah, they're gonna have a, they're gonna have an effect on the value of their property. So as a minimum, they should at least know that, wow, if you sell your home and somebody wants to add a bedroom, you're not gonna be able to. Should be some type of public service to let folks know that.
Yeah, it should be a notice of something.
We don't, but we don't really know. I mean, we don't know how many lots in there are impacted by this change.
No, but they should know generally that they're in this new zone, that these are the rules, so down the road, if you decide to add on or sell and somebody decides, you, you may not be able to do it.
Seems to me that.
Long as they know.
If you're asking for a vote at town meeting to accept this new change, granted, your hands are tied and you really need to accept it, this is a matter of law, but the people who potentially live in there need to have that explanation, maybe even in a handout, walking into the, into the town meeting.
Of course you do, you have to disclose, huh? You can't just take somebody's land value away and not disclose it.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's two different things. I mean, one, for town meeting, we can certainly have a handout to kind of explain what's going on, the reason why, and the potential impact.
Potential impact, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. As far as giving them notice beyond what standard notices, I don't know if... So I could talk to a fellow DPW director, Assistant Barry, and see if we could generate a...
He's very good with the GIS mapping and overlays.
Yeah, with GIS, so we might be able to grab all the build, you know, the lots.
What is the zoning district in that new area, or is that R1?
Well, it's all, it's R3.
R3.
A little R1 in the bottom, right? Or no?
Two.
R2?
R2. Well, we got a, you got a card.
There's R1, yeah, so there's a little bit of R1, so that's the 30,000.
Last page, yeah.
So that, yeah, that little section there would be 30. This is 43, no, I'm sorry, 55 there. That's 55,000, the R3, so.
So what ones would be most?
So really, probably that area right there, we can look and see.
Right.
What, if the property owner's there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
That's the only portion that's affected by the land size expanding there.
Yeah, yeah, that's really the only one that... All right, we can, we can do that, that makes sense. As well as doing the handout that we can have available for town.
Yes, yes. All right, so the consensus of the discussion here at the table is that we will support the language there in that third article. You would like to know whether we support these or not, right? Since we originated them. The first one, we're gonna request an IP. And the reason for that is that we feel that there's other language in the bylaw that really needs to be reworked, and we wanna do it all in one swell foup, as opposed to piecemeal. And so we're gonna IP it and come back at a later town meeting with a reworded section of the, of the bylaw. But the other two, we'll support. All right, thank you, Rich, for that work.
Want to close the public hearing?
That sounds like a good idea.
Motion to close the public hearing for the... If I'm gonna comment on some of these, should I do it publicly? Am I reading?
Yes, I think you should, but let's do this first, hang on. You had a motion to close the public hearing?
Sure, I should be, I should be mentioning these publicly, right?
Yes, I think, well.
We should do it before we close.
Well, he's not adjourning, he's just closing the public hearing.
Sorry, sorry.
All right, do we have a second for the motion that John made to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a unanimous vote, okay.
Yeah.
We have three other things on our agenda, yes, yes?
No, yeah, that's a reminder, we do need to vote on each. Did you vote to recommend?
We, we, we.
Vote to IP?
We did not, we did not vote on any of them, but we, we came to the conclusion as to what we wish to do in each of the three, yes.
You should need to concludes with a vote.
Okay, very well.
No, 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 no. No, I, yeah, I mean, I need to...
Are these, are these articles numbered, by the way, in the warrant?
They are not.
No, but I'm.
Not at this point, huh, okay. All right, so I need a, a motion around the first one to IP it.
A move that we definitely postpone, the recommendation for the first submitted article by the planning board, related to the F-11 process.
Do I have a second?
Right.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Need a motion to support the language in the second article proposed by the planning board, or just by the planner. Who's proposing this, the planning board or the planner?
I don't remember. I believe we.
The planning board, I think so, yeah.
If we're voting on it, then we're.
I think so too, yeah, all right. So do I have a motion to support the language as written here?
Yes.
So moved, yeah, all right, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. I need a motion to support the language of the third article is, article is written here.
So moved.
And any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. There you go.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, now we have three things left. A quick discussion by Rich on two items, Town Center Grant update and Complete Streets update, and then a motion by Aaron to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Oh, and the third one, fourth one, excuse me, Aaron wishes to comment on a number of letters that he's got there.
Okay.
So.
So I'll be, very quick, December 6th, at 7:00 PM, Freeman Kennedy Elementary School will have the Complete Streets Public Workshop. We'll, we'll make a, we'll put that on the website, and we'll put it on the Facebook link as well.
Fully integrated, Rich does it by itself, don't worry about it. It's all integrated, the second goes on the website, it automatically goes to Facebook.
Okay.
Oh, all right, there we go. Never mind, so we'll do that. Awesome. All right, so that, that's one, and then hopefully not a large discussion, but for the downtown B1 grant zoning review that we're working on, I'd like to actually put together a sub, a working committee that would consist between the planning board, the Board of Health, the ZBA, Design Review Board, some business owners, some property owners, and maybe even some residents at large. I know we have the zoning bylaw review committee, but I think this particular, I think, in this case, for sure, and we could talk about later, but to have a, a group that has interest, and you kind of refer this earlier anyway, about having business owners be involved, but actually, that would be the, the working committee to work with MAPC on the zoning language changes, so it can be, like I said, representation, I think is important, from the planning board, the Board of Health, the ZBA, Design Review Board.
Is this for the Town Center Grant?
Yes, yep. This is this, I'll call it the first deliverable, which is looking at the zoning for the B1. But, so, you, we have a little bit of time, but that would be my recommendation, that we put a little bit of our own creative working committee together with some.
Good idea.
You know, business property owner representation. I would think, you know, seven to nine members, that kind of range, nothing more than that. I mean, you can do more, but I mean, obviously.
Yeah.
Committee too big, and then it gets a little bit unwieldy.
You mean, seven to nine members of town boards?
In total, no, in, in total.
In total.
In total, so what I could do is, I'll take this, I'll shoot out an email, just kind of give you the makeup, and we can, you know, I was thinking, well, actually, one, maybe, so this is a little bit tricky, I was thinking, if we do one from the planning board, one from Board of Health, one from ZBA, one from Design Review, that's four members there. And then a business owner, you know, that should be represented, whether it's one or two or more, and then property owner, and maybe if you didn't wanna do residents, maybe, you know, you had a business owner and a couple of property owners, and maybe two from the planning board, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, probably, it's probably worth a little bit of discussion, maybe think about it, and we can kind of finalize it. Oops, sorry. Because the Board, Board Selectment Meet, when's the last one, the later one in November?
When's the later one in November? Yeah, she's, she's right. Tom is absolutely right.
Town meet? Okay. So we could actually, you know, throw this out now, kind of digest it, and then in the November 19th meeting of the planning board, kind of nail this down a little bit, what we think representation, and then.
Actually, it would be December 11th after that.
And then I could go, so the night of town meeting could go, because I know it's a committee, so the selectmen would have to approve of, you know, creating this working committee.
Right.
Does that sound fair, we do it that way?
Works for me. All right, thank you, Rich.
That's it for me.
Yep. Aaron, you wanna make a motion to approve the minutes, and then we'll get to the letters?
Motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting, which was September 19th, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Rich, can I ask you a quick question about Complete Streets before we move on?
Yeah.
We'll do it very quickly, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, go.
So part of the Complete Streets project was to be able to put the online more, people to go to pin and give feedback on different areas that they wanted to give attention to.
Yes.
Do you have prelim results as to where the top five areas people were talking about came out as, or is that really still?
Has it been compiled yet? No, I don't have it compiled.
But you've got feedback.
Oh, yeah, no, there's.
There was a plethora of pins on that thing, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot. Because I did see that there was something that's gonna be done with the Fordman and Rockwood intersection, and I didn't know if that was related to the Complete Streets, or if that was something that was being done outside of that.
That, that was kind of in the, kind of the works prior to all that, so, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, so not directly related.
Yeah. Although it's, in many respects, what's being, what's being done would fit exactly what Complete Streets is about, yeah.
Yep, right.
And it's gonna stay up, so after, even though we have the public meeting on December 6th, the Wiki map will stay up. We're gonna talk to Tom to get it refreshed, maybe bring it to the top, and then maybe after the public meeting, people might even become more aware of it and go back on it, so.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Aaron, you're up.
All right, from our notice of our neighbors' actions, there's quite a variety of things here this month, interestingly, or since that we last read them anyway. Three towns are voting to override their restrictions on recreational marijuana establishments. The one in front of me right now is Millis. There are two other that I'll get to as I go through my pile. Franklin is building a senior village with 105 units. The town of Medway is modifying their zoning bylaws and adding an adaptive use overlay district and a multifamily housing overlay district.
Not a 40R, but something less restrictive, it sounds like?
It's like we did at South with an overlay district.
Yeah.
Reasonably, just for one area.
Yeah.
Specific to certain properties, yeah.
Gotcha.
And this might just be more, more curiosity, but Boyd's, three houses sold at Boyd's Crossing on our records here for an average cost of $680,000. We have a notice from the DEP. We have a notice from the DEP for a resident, Norfolk resident that has applied for a dock on the Charles River.
River Street, River Road, yeah.
Yeah, River Road, yeah.
Franklin Marijuana, Brentham Marijuana.
So the marijuana is that they voted to prohibit it at town meeting and now they're looking to override that?
Correct, all three.
Is it citizens who are doing this through a petition, or?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Most of it comes out of Franklin, actually. The net site is on Ford, Ford Hill.
Yeah, you can smell it.
Just go to Forbes Park.
Yeah, the old Dario building.
Yeah.
The town of Brentham has established a village zone downtown. That zone includes three subzones, which are a village zone A, a village zone B, and a mixed use zone. Actually, there's a congregate housing zone as well. A lot of those are actually mentioned in that design guideline review.
Yeah, I saw them.
What's a congregate housing zone?
Doesn't define it.
Congregate housing zone?
Not convent, congregant.
Congregate, yeah. Or Brentham Marijuana, I mentioned that one, right? Medway, did I mention Medway Marijuana or surrounded? Town of Walpole, looks like they're approving a senior housing development as well. Age qualified village, they're calling it, doesn't, a hundred and five units.
And last time it was Millis as well, remember?
Correct.
Does anybody know what they're building, like adjacent to the train station in Walpole, a giant construction undertaking?
I don't know.
They tore like a huge, looked like a manufacturing plant or like.
Yeah, it was an old.
They've been doing that site work for like a year and a half.
They leveled it, and now I think the pylons are in, and they're starting to bring it back up again. I have no idea what it is, though, just curious.
There's two projects.
Yeah.
Third on the street.
The third one coming down the street too. That's what I have on our public notices for today.
Okay, thank you. Any other business we should be attending to tonight? If not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.